Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome. My name is Victoria Turner from the St. Louis Metro League of Women Voters, and I will be your moderator tonight. I want to thank all the candidates for participating, and the Kirkwood Youth Advisory Commission for sponsoring this forum. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that believes that one of the best ways for voters to learn about people seeking election is to hear the candidates speak and answer questions in a forum like this. You'll be electing three city council members on April the 5th. The candidates have all been provided with the forum rules ahead of time, but I will run through them quickly for the audience. This is a forum, it's not a debate. It's the candidate's opportunity to tell you about their own positions, not their opinions of the other candidates. All candidates will be given the opportunity to answer every question. The candidates will have two minutes each for an opening statement. They will have one minute to answer each question, and they will have two minutes each for the closing statement. They will give their opening statements in the order that they will be listed on the ballot, and then their closing statements will be in the reverse order. And for questions, we will rotate through so that everybody has the opportunity to provide the first answer to a question. Our timer tonight is Nancy, also from the St. Louis Metro League of Women Voters. She will time all the opening, closing statements, candidate answers, and she will give them a warning when they have 30 seconds remaining, just like that, and then indicate also when their time is up. Now, if a candidate runs out of time, I will let them finish their sentence, but no more. The city of Kirkwood and the League of Women Voters provided links on their websites whereby questions could be submitted for this forum. So, all the questions that will be asked tonight have come from you, the audience, and your fellow citizens. However, I have combined a couple of questions that are really similar or address the same topic, but I will attempt to cover the areas of interest expressed by the audience. So, let me introduce the candidates. We have Wallace Ward, Mark Zimmer, Paul Ward, and Nancy Lutso. Let us go to opening statements, and we will start with Wallace Ward. You have two minutes.
Good evening. Thank you to the volunteers from the League of Women Voters and to the participants who've signed on to listen to us. I have 40 years of service in this community. It's too extensive to discuss all of it here, but some of the high points was I served nine years on the Kirkwood School District School Board, four years, just finishing up a four-year term on the city council, and 13 years on the Missouri History Museum Subdistrict Board. One of the things that I'm most proud of is that each of the organizations that I've left, I've left in better situation than when I arrived, and that's important to me. And that's what I've attempted to do in the last four years for the city of Kirkwood. Certainly, providing a better organization for current residents and future residents is a very high priority for me. I look forward to the opportunity to spend this next hour discussing how I can fulfill that role.
Thank you. Mark Zimmer?
Hello there, and good evening, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight and for the Kirkwood Youth Advisory Commission for sponsoring tonight's forum. I'm Mark Zimmer. I've lived in Kirkwood for 30 years now, and I've been serving you on the city council for five and a half years. I've served as a volunteer for many years in the Kirkwood School District. I have served four years on the Citizen Finance Committee, finishing as vice chair. As your council member, I've worked hard to balance Kirkwood's many priorities. I've served on the Vision Zero Subcommittee to improve mobility safety in Kirkwood. I've worked on our Envision 2035 Plan, our strategic plan, and many budgeting sessions and reviews. I've worked to improve communications, including making updates to our Facebook page and the city's website. I've also taken time to read your emails and answer your phone calls. I'm running for reelection to continue representing you and working for Kirkwood. I believe in supporting responsible development, strong public safety, preserving our neighborhoods, finding ways for the city to increase revenues, and carefully monitor spending of your tax dollars. I believe in listening to all sides, doing my homework, and asking questions before making a decision or casting a vote. I'd like to continue repairing our infrastructure, restoring our historic train station, improving our community center, monitoring our spending, and driving city revenues. Tonight, I ask for your support, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you. Next, we have Paul Ward. You are on mute, sir.
Sorry about that. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the citizens for coming out this evening. It all began for me in 1986. I became a member of Kirkwood Planning and Zoning Commission with nine years of service. I was chosen by then Mayor Mark Schramm to chair the Annexation Committee for Meacham Park and unincorporated area of St. Louis County in 1989. I was then chosen to head the Planning and Redevelopment of Meacham Parks, and subsequently, I was appointed and became the chairman of TIF Commission that created the plan for redevelopment of Meacham Park and what we now know today as Pioneer Place. I've served on a myriad of boards. As I said, planning, zoning, human rights, the city council, I did 14 years as a city council member. My first term was in 2000, 2004, and I subsequently had to come back on February 7th after the tragedy we had to help with the council because they didn't have a quorum, so they could continue business. Following that, citizens encouraged me to run, and I did, and I was elected to fill out the unexpired term for county car. The city has challenges, and that's why I'm stepping up. I believe that there's a lot of work that needs to be done, infrastructure needs. My shining accomplishment, I have to say, was the Performing Arts Center that I have championed for little over 25 years, and we finally got it done. And the city is seeing that arts are important to enriching us as well as an economic engine. So, I look forward to the questions tonight, and hopefully, citizens will see that I'm a good choice. Thank you.
Thank you. And Nancy?
Good evening, everyone, and like everyone else has said, thank you so much to the Youth Advisory Commission for sponsoring, and as always, to the League of Women Voters for moderating this forum as we discuss what you, the voters, believe are the most important issues needing to be addressed in the next few years. For those who don't know me, I'm Nancy Lutso. My husband and I have lived in Kirkwood for 30 years in Craig Woods. I'm a retired, former self-employed professional linguist, graduated from Wash U in 1975 with a bachelor's degree in Russian. And if anyone cares, I went to Afton High School and graduated a year after John Goodman. I served on city council from 2012 to 2020, and also as deputy mayor for the last two years of my second term. And I was termed out in 2020. Coming up in the next four years are at least three big projects which were initiated while I was on council before. The one that's especially near and dear to my heart is the restoration of our train station. I've served on the Train Station Foundation since 2016, and in the past two years, since I've been off of council, I've been very closely involved in the fundraising efforts, which, by the way, are really starting to pay off with the more than $800,000 in private funds and the $1.5 million grant awarded to the city by East West Gateway recently. Citizens have been very generous, and we are getting there. We're looking for $4.6 million. We have the community center renovation on the drawing board that was begun back in 2014, and I believe within the next couple of years, council is definitely going to get down to working on that. Last but not least is the implementation of the pedestrian bike walk plan, in which I played a major part in the legislation and also on the Planning Steering Committee.
Thank you. All right. Now, the first question will go first to Wallace Ward. What do you see as the three biggest challenges in Kirkwood today? And what are your recommendations to address them?
Well, those would be streets, our water supply network, and development of our downtown business district. The streets, as you know, have been an ongoing problem. It grew up over the last 13 years to 14 years. We are recently changing the methodology we use in order to address street repair and maintenance instead of using a quadratic system where we geographically divided the city up. We'll now attack those streets where they need to be repaired. Our water system is leaking $240,000 worth of water annually. It will take us at the current rate 100 years to repair the system, so we'll never get there. So, we need to have a fast-paced, comprehensive evaluation of how we fund the repair and placement of our water network. The development of downtown business district, as you can see, is underway.
Thank you. Mark Zimmer?
Thank you. I think for me, the top three issues are definitely the Kirkwood budget. I've looked at 10 budget cycles now, and every year, expenses rise. So, we need to ensure that we are driving revenues and looking for new revenue sources. We've partnered with other surrounding municipalities using our excess capacity for dispatch, police, and fire services. That's one good way to drive revenues for the city. Our streets are obviously a major priority. They've been at the top of the list of every employee survey or every citizen survey since I've been on the council. So, we need to continue to find ways to fund and repair our streets. Employee retention is important. As a lot of folks know, good people are hard to find, and we want to continue to attract and retain good employees for the city. Thank you.
Paul Ward?
Yes, infrastructure, infrastructure, and infrastructure. Streets, water, all of those things are important. Revenue is vitally important. We are a point-of-sale city, so sales tax is very important to us, and we need to take every opportunity to make sure that we are the leader in that. And one of our concerns must be that we're seeing a drop-off in the pool revenues, and that's concerning because as municipalities get weak around us, we get weak. So, we've got to work and partner with and work with other municipalities to help keep them strong and keep Kirkwood strong. So, that be it.
Thank you. Nancy Lutso?
The top three things, well, I agree with my colleagues here on all of those, but for me, the top three things, I guess it would be, what I'm concerned about really right now is the budget impact to the global pandemic, supply chain problems, the rising fuel costs, and, to be honest, seems like some price gouging. This is creating inflation of 6% to 7% on expenses and on our ability to, may hamper our ability to complete capital projects as planned and as scheduled. I also see the teardown of affordable homes and replacement with large and new expensive infill is another constant problem. We've got about 85 new infill homes going up in Kirkwood every year, and the starting price on those is typically $700,000 or more. So, it makes it really hard for young families and first timers to even come to Kirkwood. We've also, as was alluded to, personnel.
Thank you. Right, the next question will go first to Mark Zimmer. We had quite a few questions submitted on the general area of housing. The example of the South Harrison Avenue House under construction and then required to be torn down due to a setback violation has many citizens talking about development in Kirkwood. Will you hold a large condo development or retail establishment to the same standard and require the building to be torn down if standards aren't met?
Now, I will say this regarding the South Harrison Avenue House. I believe the builder realized the mistake and approached the city about this. Tearing the house down was not the only option they had, but that's the one that they chose. Yes, we should hold everyone accountable to our codes, and that's exactly what happened with this home. What I mentioned last night, if we allow an exception for a builder, other builders in the future might look and say, well, you let them keep that house, and it was a foot over. I want, you know, I want to be given an exception as well. So, it's very difficult, and it's an unfortunate situation. We want to encourage healthy development in Kirkwood, but we want to follow the codes, and we want to hold folks accountable for when they don't. But we also want to be able to work with homeowners and builders to ensure that we have thriving and healthy neighborhoods.
Thank you. Next, Paul Ward.
These are always difficult, but I want to point out to everyone that the decisions to, if a violation has occurred and that is brought to the Board of Adjustment, council members have no say. That is a Board of Adjustment decision. It is a quasi-legal board, and what they decide stands. The next recourse for a petitioner is to go to court, county court and federal court after that. So, it's not up to your elected officials to make those decisions. On the Harrison House, I was, I am a Board of Adjustment member, and I was one of the three who voted no on that issue. The law is the law, and we have to adhere to it. Where there is areas for us to give, we should. If not, the answer should be no.
Thank you. Nancy?
Well, yeah, the South Harrison situation was definitely unfortunate. This is not the first time it's happened. We had a similar situation, though by us, a rather smaller margin a few years ago. And I recall actually another local builder remodeler saying that those survey pins need to be guarded with your life and make sure that they're set properly and you adhere to them and that there's no tampering or whatever. As far as a big condo development, I mean, we have our codes. If someone is seeking a variance, that would be determined before construction and all of that starts. So, builders, developers are well aware of the codes. They do this for a living, and they know how to meet the codes in a professional way. So, there should really, there shouldn't be much room for this kind of error to take place. Unfortunately, it did.
Thank you. And Wallace Ward?
Commercial or residential, single-family residential, we expect adherence to what our codes for construction are. In the particular case on South Harrison, the builder made a mistake. It was unfortunate. He did have other options. He chose the most drastic option, and that was to tear the home down. But, you know, our city history is littered with similar situations we had over the last four years. We've had some homeowners who've moved into a home that was built incorrectly before it was caught. One of the reasons that we have had the change in our code of inspection and ordinance was because I was aware of that and went to the planning department and said, we've got to stop, we've got to cut these things off before the construction process gets as far along as it has. And so, that's what we've done now. That inspection will come along much earlier to catch serious problems that were like we had on South Harrison.
Thank you. Next question will go first to Paul Ward. Kirkwood housing is rapidly changing in a way that is making our community inaccessible to middle-income families. What do you plan to do to protect existing and promote development of smaller, single-family homes?
Well, it's difficult for government, and when you don't have a cash cow, it's hard for government to go in and institute certainly laws which can bring about a negative effect. So, we have to be careful how we do that. Growing up in a modest neighborhood, I understand the challenges. I know for myself personally, it took me 10 years to acquire a home in Kirkwood. It was a lot of hard work. It can be done, but we, as a community, have to work at it. In the old days, people told you when they were going to sell their homes. Today, people are bombarded, no matter where you live, no matter what your income. People are bombarded by someone wanting to buy their home. So, I can't give a direct solution, but there are opportunities, and we should have a conversation with the community about what we can do ultimately to make that happen.
Nancy Lutso?
As I sort of started to allude to previously, the infill housing in Kirkwood is kind of a deja vu all over again. We've been talking about this for quite a while, and it is a problem for young families who want to come to Kirkwood. My husband and I came here 30 years ago, and we were fortunate enough to find a house that we could actually afford. I'm not sure we could do it again. So, other communities around us don't have the same rate of new infill demolitions and new info that we do. Kirkwood is kind of a victim of its own success with such a wonderful community and wonderful schools. A lot of people want to come to Kirkwood. I don't blame them. How we can, and sort of, I think maybe the economy itself may slow some of this down as mortgage rates rise and the economy is, we've got inflation going on. People may not wish to take on huge mortgages, so we might have more remodeling and those kinds of things happen.
Thanks. Wallace Ward?
Well, unless someone's devised a way to suspend the laws of economics, there's no good, healthy way for the city to control the prices of its homes. Now, we can control lot coverage in terms of how much of a yard you can cover over with house and with pavement, but the flip side of that coin is you're telling current homeowners, I want you to get less for your home when you want to sell it. I'm sure there's someone out there in the community of 29,000 people that's willing to do that, but I would bet they're in a very small group. So, the reality is Nancy has a right. We're an attractive community to be in. That means demand is high, that means prices go high. So, it's not a very one-stop, one-push-one-button, and we can fix what that problem is, the price of housing.
Mark Zimmer?
A lot of good comments here on this. You know, we've been talking about this for years and years, and that should tell everyone that there is no easy solution to it. A lot of this is market-driven. People want to be in Kirkwood. The houses that are selling for over $700,000 are being purchased. And, you know, we are a victim of our success because people love Kirkwood so much, they're willing to pay to live here. Now, as far as our existing housing stock, you know, drive around Kirkwood these last several weeks, there are a lot of houses that are smaller and older that we should strive to continue to preserve. We can work on possibly making it easier for homeowner to remodel or expand their home on an existing footprint rather than tear it down and start over. Because when you tear a home down, or if you're older, you have to invest that time and money to increase the price.
The next question will go first to Nancy, and again, it is related to the infill housing. Homeowners in Kirkwood have suffered damage through increased stormwater runoff and flooding, clear-cutting, blocking of light and views, and encroachment on privacy when homes that fill lots and are much larger than existing homes in a neighborhood are built. How would you ensure that existing homes' values aren't damaged by infill development?
Wow, that's another difficult one. So, it was maybe four years ago or so, I actually chaired the committee, the council's Subcommittee on Stormwater Guidelines, and we worked to institute new guidelines on controlling stormwater on residential infill. I'd be curious to revisit all of that to see how successful it's been, especially as we have, you know, continuing changes in climate and, you know, heavy rainfall, deluge. But it is a problem with all of the increasing footprints of the new infill homes that builders are building from edge to edge, and the BMPs are not really meant to control all of it. They will only, you know, help abate and mitigate a small portion of stormwater. So, it's something that we constantly have to face and re-review as time goes on.
Wallace Ward?
Yeah, the current stormwater ordinance, which was brand-new for our community, was designed to capture what they call first flush. So, the first one inch of rainfall. After that, it goes where it goes. And even at that point, it's very expensive for homeowners who have to come in and create a stormwater system in a home, whether they're doing a significant remodel or addition to a home, or whether they're building a brand-new home. It's expensive, and the results are mixed depending on where you are. What we found when we had the Stormwater Committee, and I served on that with Nancy, was that the issue became one of velocity, the velocity of the water. Same amount of water was there, but it was growing faster, moving faster because a lot of shrubs and trees and things had been removed, which had previously slowed that stormwater down. So, we'll need to revisit that.
Mark Zimmer?
You know, this is another, this is another difficult situation because there's not a lot of inexpensive answers to it. When the stormwater guidelines were revised, that adds existing costs and as well as new costs to a builder, homeowner, or a potential buyer. Somebody's going to have to pay for it. I think we need to continue to look at the issue to see what we've learned and what's changed after our new stormwater guidelines have been implemented. You know, that first inch might be mitigated, but after that, the velocity does increase. And what's the solution to that? Again, that's another issue that there's no easy, quick, inexpensive answer to, but I think we should still continue to look and see what we can do to mitigate that as much as possible, especially relative to existing homes.
And Paul Ward?
Yes, I agree with all the points of all of the other candidates, but I want to point out something that is related to the previous question. These are the things that government must be very careful of because these are the unintended consequences. When we talk about existing homes, modern families want modern amenities. So, the moment they want to add an addition to the home, there is an automatic $4,000, $5,000 cost that they've got to address to deal with stormwater. So, we have to be challenged to sit down and come up with solutions that are going to work across housing styles, lot size, and incomes. And that takes a lot of work. And so, certainly, what the council did previously with stormwater is a good start, but we've got a lot of work to do.
Thank you. The next question will go first to Wallace Ward. What plan do you recommend to provide safe and adequate parking within a reasonable distance for people of all ages and abilities in downtown Kirkwood?
Wow, that's, well, that's a tough one. I think the best we can do with the ground that we have available down there is to use a combination of structured parking and surface parking, which will likely require us to utilize which will likely require us to utilize uh, some form of conveyance like a uh, valet service. Uh, because it's, it, it's too expensive for us to try and create parking in the immediate business area. We just don't have that ground. So that's a very complex problem. I think there's, the solutions as much as possible need to be handled by private enterprise and not by this, the public.
Mark Zimmer.
Yeah, I think this is another complicated question where there's probably going to be multiple solutions. Uh, you're looking at a combination of structured and ground parking. You're looking at some type of possible public transit or valet service, as Wallace mentioned. Uh, we had the E-Cab that was well-liked and that could be an option uh, for a broader part of downtown. You know, downtown uh, a hundred and fifty years ago was not designed for all these cars. And we all want that rock star parking right at the front door. Uh, but you know, we'll have to make some compromises. We'll have to look at various solutions to make it easier, especially with folks for mobility issues, to be able to park as close as possible.
Uh, Paul Ward.
Yes, I agree with the previous com- uh, comments. But uh, one of the things I think we need to do is realize that we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We need to look around the country and even overseas to see how these issues are addressed and, and bring back those ideas and sit down around a table and see what will work for us. Um, you know, America isn't the only place in the world that has traffic. So I think one of the solutions is looking elsewhere.
And Nancy Lotso.
Thank you. So um, when we did the downtown master plan study, part of that was a parking study. And it was determined um, that downtown basically is pretty much the length of the Galleria uh, shopping mall with about as many parking spaces. And it was determined that we really don't have a shortage of parking. Maybe we have a shortage of parking right outside the most popular um, uh, destinations, restaurants. Um, I think what we, what we need to do is kind of a combination of things. We need to educate people, change the culture. We have the bike walk plan. We need to make sure that the sidewalks are good, that they're ADA accessible. Um, we've now got all kinds of new signalized intersections to make it safe for people to walk. So those people who can walk should be encouraged to walk. My son lives in Chicago, and if you can get within a mile of your destination there, park, parking, you are really a, a lucky person. So um, I think uh, struck. I could go on.
All right, the next question goes first to Mark Zimmer. Kirkwood is already below the national average of parkland per capita, and this deficit will only grow. What goals would you set in expanding our parkland? And where would you want to see new parkland located?
Thank you. Kirkwood is a landlocked city. We are limited in new parks that we could possibly purchase. Uh, that is always an option. Uh, we have a lot of great parks, even though our per capita may be below national average. Uh, I believe our citizens enjoy our parks and, and use them frequently. I know we do. And we need to maximize our parks as much as we possibly can because we are landlocked. Uh, if we are fortunate to purchase new parkland in the future, uh, that would be a bonus. But we have a lot of good parks. We need to continue to focus on our park master plan and maximize those parks to the benefit of our residents so that the residents can use them, make sure that there's tree canopies and facilities and amenities that everyone in the city can use.
Thank you. Paul Ward.
I agree uh, with Mark, what Mark said, but uh, you know, we are a landlocked city. I don't know where we can acquire um, ground to give to the parks department. Uh, but Kirkwood's a pretty green place. And I think we need to encourage people to use, utilize what we have and have educational programs so homeowners uh, see the importance of what they do around their, their property that enhances um, the green space and the quality that uh, makes Kirkwood unique. It's a, it's a national fact that communities that, that are tree-lined are safer. So I think that's one of the reasons Kirkwood is attractive as it is. But we should always keep our eye on the prize and find ways to, to always try and reach that mark of more green space where appropriate.
Nancy Lotso.
Um, so I don't remember um, how long ago it was. There was a, a citizen survey about uh, our parks. And we love our parks. I think our parks are wonderful. We have the half-cent park stormwater tax that helps support it and the aquatic center. Anyway, um, the citizen said, we've got enough parkland, let's take care of what we do have. So in the past, gosh, five, ten years, um, new um, new uh, playground equipment, all kinds of trails, all kinds of things have, have gone in, in the parks. I think, I'm not cer- I mean, maybe according to the national survey, you know, it might, per capita might be, you know, on the low side, but I, there are many parks I think that a lot of people are unaware of and could be better utilized, maybe improved some. Green tree is not overrun with too many people down there. Um, so I, I, I think we could look at improving our parks, possibly uh, expanding the acreage.
Thanks. And uh, Wallace Ward.
I'd, I'd like to have a, a reevaluation of that uh, scale based on the inclusion of the school district properties that we have. We have seven of the school districts, eight buildings are, are within the city limits of Kirkwood. You have eleven acres that are completely vacant and raw, just Ed Linderman and Dottie Ferry. Uh, the school district has not placed barbed wire fences up. Taxpayers who, who pay for those school grounds also pay for our park grounds. So I think when you, when you, when you take that into consideration, we have a significant amount of green space.
Thank you. Next question, uh, will go to Paul Ward first. Do you think any safety enhancements are missing from the Phase Two Gaia Road project?
Um, not that I'm aware of. Uh, you know, staff generally does a good job. Uh, you know, we're hopeful, I would be hopeful, at least from the outside, to see if there's something in the the Vision Zero that could be applied to um, that project if it's not too late. But uh, in general, um, I, I have no issue with what staff has proposed.
Nancy.
Um, I have looked at the, the, the plans and I plan on attending the open house that is gonna be held, I believe, uh, later this week. So um, I'm wondering if there's uh, opportunity possibly for putting in uh, mid-block crosswalks, at least with painted and signage. Um, a, a couple of the crossings are, they're pretty uh, large distance uh, between the uh, actual street intersections. So is there a possibility for that? I'm also wondering about the um, the right turn at Woodbine and Geyer. There's like a little cutout thing. To me, I, I go through there all the time and that's a li- a little bit strange. I just wonder if there's a way of possibly reconfiguring that to make it more um, safe. There may be some other things that other citizens have, but I think it's basically a, a, I think that uh, staff have done a good job planning it, and I look forward to hearing what other citizens have to say about it.
Wallace Ward.
Well, I, I, I'm not sure anybody would consider us too safe at this point. I would like to see us established universally that we utilize pedestrian control, flashing beacons at our crosswalks. A great many of the residents who are drivers who pass through here are commuters. They don't live in this community. And, and even with the uh, inclusion of our Vision Zero plan and the Complete Streets program, we won't have an application, op- opportunity to, to re-educate those drivers. Uh, you see them off, you, you take your life in your own hands. You're obligated to step into the street and hope that they're gonna stop for you. And it's just because they don't recognize you at, there. So with the flashing beacon, which they aren't terribly expensive, I'd like to see that at their, addressed. I'd like to see more done at the intersection of uh, Geyer and Big Bend. That's a mess. We should make some attempts to reduce that congestion and, and improve the safety at that crossing.
Thank you. Mark Zimmer.
I think the safety enhancements um, that staff has reviewed, I thi- I, I think staff does a really good job. Uh, you know, these folks have been involved with our Vision Zero plan, and you know, we've added a lot of safety enhancements. I believe that pedestrian hybrid beacons are, are a very excellent solution to increasing public safety. Geyer and Big Bend, uh, anywhere along Gaia Road, those intersections can be dangerous and we need to ensure that we've got those safety enhancements. You know, our pedestrian hybrid beacons along with specific crosswalks and crossings that are narrowed to slow down traffic uh, would be a big help. And that, you know, that's gonna help all over Kirkwood, not just on South Geyer.
Thank you. Okay, next question um, to Nancy Lotso first. What is your opinion on future bicycle projects such as the extension of Grant's Trail to downtown Kirkwood or family mountain biking paths in Kirkwood Park?
Wow, that's kind of two opposite ends of the spectrum there. Um, so I think the planning so far for the extension of Grant's Trail into downtown Kirkwood has gone really well. The planning that the, the uh, consultants that were hired, the public process has been um, exhaustive. And I think that uh, the option that most citizens chose um, that uh, uh, the grant submittal is, is based upon to uh, East West Gateway is, is the proper one, that's, that's most uh, financially feasible, has the fewest conflicts as far as traffic and driveways and all that kind of stuff. And um, I'm fingers crossed that we get uh, the funding to help, to help build that within the next four year, or uh, within the next few years to uh, help, you know, with um, bring bicyclists into downtown Kirkwood or allow Kirkwood's uh, cyclists to jump on Grant's Trail and, and head on uh, you know, southeast. Um, mountain biking, there was a proposal for.
Okay, Wallace Ward.
So Grant's Trail, I think, is important for part of the uh, energy and creating Kirkwood as a, as a destination without, within the region. And, and it's a quality of life issue for the residents of Kirkwood to be able to ride that trail as a family or as individuals. Um, the, the issue, so completing that into downtown and getting it down to the train station is just a uh, common sense uh, development as far as I'm concerned. The uh, issue of uh, mountain bike trails in Kirkwood Park, you know, the council does not have authority to control what happens within the park properties. But I would simply encourage the park board to pursue a survey, a complete thorough scientific survey of the community as to wh- uh, how they feel about the development of a mountain bike trail within Kirkwood Park.
Mark.
Yes, Grant's Trail has an opportunity to create a, a completion of that path right to our downtown center. The grant money will, will help get that done. That's gonna be an important part to make Kirkwood even more attractive. It's going to help drive downtown business sales. And it's going to ensure connectivity with the surrounding areas. Now, we have a master bike pedestrian plan for the city, and part of that plan is to make biking safer in Kirkwood. And using that plan along with Grant's Trail will route bikers to the safest areas within the city. Uh, you know, we wanna avoid keeping bikers off of the main thoroughfares like Manchester and Big Bend. Uh, we wanna keep them on safer, slower streets. Uh, as far as the mountain biking in Kirkwood Park.
And Paul Ward.
Yes, uh, Kirkwood Park, as you've already heard, that's a decision that's not up to the council. Uh, as far as the uh, Grant's Trail, I proposed a comprehensive development plan over six years ago uh, that most of it would have been done with private money. Um, but again, because those things become uh, a good economic engine and it's desirable to have people on bikes in a controlled area. Being able to uh, meld uh, surface tray uh, the roads, trains, and biking through Kirkwood to downtown and to the farther western areas was a, a smart idea, and I'm glad that council has followed through with that and, and it's getting something done on it.
Thank you. So Wallace Ward, the next one goes to you first. Will you support the nationally recognized safe routes to school for student walking and biking with safety enhancements from the FHWA STEP program? Will these routes be incorporated into the existing bike walk map?
Well, we've already implemented part of the safe routes to school uh, from Big Bend uh, down Kirkwood Road over to Nifer Middle School. And I would expect that we will, as they become um, appropriate in, in our redevelopment of our streets, that we will uh, continue to extend those safe routes to students uh, within our, our community. It's the right thing to do.
Mark Zimmer.
Yeah, we, we have worked on safe routes to schools and we continue to incorporate those as part of our overall Vision Zero program. And you know, Vision Zero not only focuses on our wayfinding and our bike paths to make biking safer, it also focuses on safer routes to our schools in Kirkwood. So uh, I wanna continue to see us doing that and focus on those areas part of our already existing plan where we can fo- focus on safety enhancements for our bikers and our walkers.
Paul Ward.
Yes, I, I agree with what has just been said. And of course, we want safety in all, for all in the corridors, cars, walkers, bikers, uh, joggers, that's a, a priority. So I don't see where that wouldn't be carried through. Hopefully with the Vision Zero um, of being adopted over time, we'll be able to get to all of those uh, levels as we move forward.
And Nancy Lotso.
Sure, um, as we were um, putting together the bike walk plan, um, we definitely looked at uh, the safe routes to schools. Walking school buses, it's been shown that kids who actually walk to school or bike to school show up to school and they're more ready to learn because they've got their blood flowing and got rid of a little bit of energy. So we, we actually have been putting safe routes to schools in uh, in place for a number of years. The South Kirkwood um, uh, uh, project was part of that, filling in sidewalk gaps, discouraging kids from crossing the railroad tracks at certain locations, putting in uh, enhanced um, signalized intersections. Um, so we're, we're definitely all about getting kids rather than being driven to school if they're within walking distance, biking distance of schools. It's the best thing. Um, and we have worked with the schools and the principals and uh, trying to figure out how the city can, can best achieve what, what.
You can finish your sentence.
How, how best to achieve, what is the best thing for the kids?
Thank you. Okay, now the next question is for you first, Mark Zimmer, and it, it's leaving behind specific city policies for a moment here. Do you believe that parents have a right to have a say in what their child is taught in public schools?
As a parent? Absolutely. Yes, parents should have a right. Um, you know, I, uh, if, if we're gonna talk above local politics, there's unfortunately a lot of divisiveness that exists. And I certainly advocate working together, parents, teachers, and school districts to come up with curriculum, to come up with. to come up with curriculum, to come up with what happens in the schools. Parents know their children, educators are experts at educating. And I think that for the sake of our children, we have to work together to ensure that everybody's a part of this process. It can't be just one side or the other. It has to be everybody. These kids don't live in a vacuum. But yes, the parents absolutely have to be involved in this. And they have a right to, they have a right to be a part of that and have their voices heard.
Paul Ward?
I agree. Yes, parents should have a voice. But we do have an elected school board. If they're doing their job effectively, I think parents would feel comfortable. There's been some challenges with the COVID that we've dealt with over the last two years that has made everyone anxious and accusatory. Hopefully, as this calms down, cooler heads will prevail. And with a school board that's being effective and voicing the issues of parents, things will get better.
Nancy Lotso?
Certainly, parents have a right to say what their children are taught. They can also choose the school that their child goes to or perhaps even homeschool if they have an issue with public schools. The public school district in Kirkwood, Kirkwood are seven schools, are excellent schools. It's one of the reasons why Kirkwood is so popular right now. If you look at the performance metrics of our kids, they are ready for whatever comes next by far and away. We're one of the top maybe five schools in the state of Missouri as far as testing, the MAP tests, the ACT tests. I have three sons, all graduated from Kirkwood High School. They are all professionals. One's an engineer, one's a financial consultant. Our kids are ready for college. They're ready to move on to whatever there is. So I have a full faith in the school board and then voters who choose the school boards and allow them as much leeway as possible.
And Wallace Ward?
Well, my record in public service demonstrates the importance of children and education to me in my nine years on the school board. And I've been serving continuously for almost 30 years on boards involved with those disadvantaged preschoolers. So it's important to me, meeting the needs of our children and providing a safe educational platform for them and having those goals of their parents met by our schools are important too. I just don't believe that this is the platform for that conversation.
Thank you. Paul Ward, the next question goes to you first. What do you think is the most important infrastructure project needed in Kirkwood right now?
The one that's been going on for seems like ever, streets. Streets are one of the things that we need to address. That would be my number one priority is streets and then water. And then, and with streets, you can't leave out our bridges that are reaching, I think they're 25 years old. So we need to keep our eye on the prize on that one. We know what happened the last time we let those bridges go. We lost all five of them at the same time. So we need to stay on top of that, but streets is the major one.
Nancy Lotso?
Oh, one infrastructure project, I don't know that I can single, can single one out. Streets, actually, that's kind of an ongoing thing because by the time we would repave all of our streets, let's say over a 25-year period, we'd be back to square one redoing it again, sometimes even more quickly than that. Because asphalt and it does not hold up as well as concrete does. We've got heavy trash trucks and all kinds of delivery trucks. So it's a constant wear and tear with those as well as other challenges where with all new infill, you have utility shut offs coming in and tearing up sometimes brand new pavement. Water is another issue, but we've got an infrastructure renewal charge on there. And we should be getting back to 1% replacement of water mains within the next few years and get back on track with that. We've also got MSD, but that's an outside entity.
All right, I think you're up to three. Wallace Ward?
Streets, but I think we can accelerate the repair and maintenance of our streets or replacements of our streets. We need to have a very serious conversation with the community about how we're going to get that done. But we also need to multitask. The idea that this 1% replacement is practical and is logical just, it confuses me. It is akin to claiming you're first violinist on the Titanic Orchestra. You know, comparing ourselves against a nation that has a failing water system is just ludicrous. We need to have a plan in place for how we can rapidly get that and repair it and do it soon. And we can do that with 2080 spending where the taxpayers will pick up 20% and we can get the Fed money to pick up the 80%. But we have to, one, evaluate what that cost is and then develop a plan with the community on how we're going to get that done. I don't want to wake up one day and have Kirkwood as Flint, Michigan.
Mark Zimmer?
The most important infrastructure project in Kirkwood is obviously streets. But one thing, when I was on the finance committee, we pointed out that the streets are being repaired and then they were being torn up for water main replacements. So we need to make sure that we're coordinating those repairs so that we don't have to go backwards and fix the street again the second time. A lot of demands with our streets, we've been talking about Vision Zero and enhanced safety improvements. And, you know, all of these things that we want, which is all encompassing, but revolves around our streets. The one thing that's been on our citizen surveys, the minimum the last five years is fixing the pavement. And we've changed our course. We're focusing on the bottom streets and getting those fixed first. And then we can go from there, but we need to, we need to have an overall plan to move forward. And especially, we've got to find funding to pay for it.
So we have time for one more question and then we'll go to closing statements. But before I ask the last question, we did have several questions submitted that were along the lines of, tell me why I should vote for you? What is it that makes you the best candidate? But I think rather than ask those, if you could all maybe touch on those points in your closing, I think that's the best way to get that in. So the last question, which will go to Nancy Lotso first. You've all served on the council before. What's one thing that you have learned from your time on the city council?
Maybe that local government is the level of governance that is closest to our citizens. It's the one that we have the most control over and it's the one that has probably the biggest impact on our lives. The people that we can't see right now on this Zoom call are our neighbors. They know where I live. Local government, it takes care of the roads, takes care of, builds performing arts centers, encourages small businesses, the parks, the whole gamut. In Kirkwood, a full-service community, we provide the sanitation, the water service, the electric service. I mean, it's what doesn't touch our lives. So it's probably the most important and the one that we have the most impact.
Thank you. Wallace Ward?
I guess I'll state this is the lesson that I've relearned and that is still communication. And that's everything that encompasses. First and foremost is communication among council members. Meeting after meeting, council members are mute. That gives misleading signals to not only the community, but also to staff. We grow when we communicate with one another, when we have those open, very public conversations with one another, issue after issue. You've heard references to the finance of the city. If you pull up the videos of the last three years of budget hearings, you'll only hear one voice there. That's not adequate. That's inadequate and that's a disservice to our community. So communication is the most important lesson that I've learned.
Mark Zimmer?
You know, I've learned a lot of different things being on the council. I've learned that citizens cherish and value their neighborhoods and they like their neighborhoods the way they are. I've also learned that, you know, communication is important between us and the citizens. If we provide effective communication to the citizens and explain what we're doing and why we're doing it, then the citizens are going to support us and.
You're frozen, Mark.
Successful. We're so successful that would, we're a victim of our success and we have a lot of good things going, but they create these unintended consequences like driving our average housing prices up. So, you know, I think it's important for us to continue to look to the future and sustain what we're doing. So that in 20 to 30 years from now, we can look back and say, we've made good decisions for the city. Sorry, I think you all lost me a minute there.
We did. We lost you a little in the middle, but I think, I think we got your answer.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And finally, Paul Ward?
Yes, my 14 years on council and my 37 years of service locally as well as on the state municipal board gave me an opportunity to be exposed to elected officials from all over the state. What I've learned over time is it's critical that people, that we should understand and and explain to people and communicate with people to the highest degree what is going on and why we're doing what we're doing. I've learned over time that government's job and certainly its elected official's job is to manage change because change is going to occur whether we like it or not. But we need to give it to people at a pace that they can accept it and they can understand it. The other thing that I've learned is that government's, one of government's unique jobs is to create fertile ground, make fair rules and then get the hell out the way.
Great, thank you. So now we will move on to your closing statements and we will go in reverse ballot order. So that will start with Nancy Lotso. Nancy, you have two minutes to close.
Thank you. So the last couple of years have been extremely trying, to say the least, with the pandemic causing healthcare emergencies and impacting the economy. And now the sad state of affairs in Eastern Europe creating additional pressures. As I just said, so much of that is beyond our control. But what we do have some control over is what goes on here in Kirkwood, which actually has the greatest impact on our lives, our great parks, schools, businesses, restaurants, wonderful community with residents who really care about their neighbors. As a council member for eight years, planning and zoning commissioner for three years, and now as a landmarks commissioner, I've worked hard to make Kirkwood and keep Kirkwood a great place to live, work and play. If elected to another term, my priorities will be keeping a close eye on our budget, as I said before. Also supporting our police, fire and EMS so they can continue to serve our community to the best of their ability. And as we all alluded to, it's important to fulfill infrastructure needs with a focus on streets and sidewalks and the funding to do that. I also continue to help protect our neighborhoods and preserve historic buildings, support our small businesses and appropriate development, which helps maintain the vitality of our wonderful downtown and it helps pay the bills with all those sales tax revenues. Last but not least, the biggest thing is encouraging citizen feedback and involvement. This is where that communication comes into play. And maybe some of the citizens sitting out there today will get an application and join a board or commission. It's very fun and rewarding. I don't want to make any lofty campaign promises, but what I will promise to do is continue working hard and doing my homework for all Kirkwood citizens, continuing to listen and respond to your concerns and to continue making well-reasoned and thoughtful decisions that consider all the facts and different points of view. I want to thank you for this chance to talk to you all tonight and would love the chance to get back to work on city council. Thank you.
Right, next we have Paul Ward.
All right, thank you. My father made it clear that everyone is a participant in our world, but few are called upon to be a contributor. I hope that we can all, we can agree, we have shared values as Kirkwoodians. That's why we chose this wonderful community. It has eclectic housing, good city governance services and a solid educational system. The first opportunity the citizens of Kirkwood gave me as a potential councilman, I stated then, and each time I've sought this or any elected office, I would like to earn your trust. And while in office, I'm not there to win, but to do what is right for our community. If my experience and candor resonates with your views of one of the next elected official seats, I'm grateful. If not, thank you for the opportunity to present myself and peace be with you all.
Mark Zimmer?
Thank you once again, the League of Women of the First and the Kirkwood Youth Advisory Commission for hosting tonight's forum. I'm Mark Zimmer. I believe my experience, my volunteer work, my education and my ability to balance different perspectives make me qualified to keep working for Kirkwood. I plan to continue to investigate, ask questions, hear all sides and carefully consider the issues before us. I will keep supporting fiscal responsibility, balanced development, public safety, vibrant neighborhoods and honest government. I also pledge to be open and listen. I'll tell a quick story. During one recent council meeting in January, one of the citizens spoke and was quoting all the council members. Of course, she got to me and she said, Councilman Zimmer, you said that you will intend to listen to all citizens and work to represent you. I believe all citizens in Kirkwood should be heard, have a voice and be represented by members of the city council. Well, you know, she was absolutely right. I believe that and I believe that even one comment is worth asking questions and listening to. I believe it is my job as your council member to look out for you and your interests, to balance and prioritize issues fairly, to stand up for you and make good decisions for now and the future of the city of Kirkwood. To me, that is acting as your voice and your representation. I thank you all for your consideration and your time and your support and I ask for your vote. Thank you.
And now Wallace Ward?
Thank you for allowing us to give this opportunity to express our opinions on issues and issues. It's customary at this time for us to claim and for myself to claim that I can walk on water and that I've done that successfully over the last four years. That's not true. So let me dispel that right away. I see my role is, and I'm asking you to allow me to come back to continue the good work that I've done over the past four years. And that's by being your voice in the room. You can't get anything done by yourself. That makes us a dictator and that hasn't worked well for anybody throughout history. We work as a group. I see my role as having conversations, even if I have to force those conversations with my fellow council members, so that the community sees that public discourse, so that it sees that their interests are being addressed, whether it goes in their favor or not, at least their thoughts and the concerns that they had expressed or harbored are being addressed. I think we can, we have a lot of good work we can continue to do. We got a lot of things started over the last four years. I'd like an opportunity to be in the room for you and for all the residents in the area.
Thank you. Well, thank you to all of our candidates for participating and thank you to all of you for watching. Thank you to our hosts, the Kirkwood Youth Advisory. Thank you to our hosts, the Kirkwood Youth Advisory Commission. Now, if you found today's forum to be useful, think about joining us by becoming a member of the St. Louis Metro League of Women Voters. If you'd like to make a modest donation, if you appreciate the free services we provide to educate voters, our website is l w v s t l dot o r g. And you can learn about the candidates and other ballot issues by consulting our voter's guide at vote four one one dot o r g. And of course, vote on April fifth. Thank you.